Well, it is nine o'clock. I think we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. If you'd stand with me for the flag salute, I'd appreciate that. Well, it is nine o'clock. I think we'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. If you'd stand with me for the flag salute, I'd appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing. Chaplain Adam Wooton is going to lead us in prayer this morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to be here. Our heads. Father God, thank you so much for each person that's here. Thank you for everything that they represent, for this community, for this county, for this cities that we are surrounded by within this county. Thank you for their hearts. Thank you for everything that they do. May you also bless the members of this commission, bless their homes, bless each one of us as we try to do the things that we feel your will is to help better this community and build better this county and grow stronger as a whole. Thank you for who you are and what you do in our life, and may all of us be blessed by the blessings that surround us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, I appreciate you being to this meeting this morning. I think we're going to let the 4-H order to present something this morning. We'll let them come to the podium first, if you would, and just go ahead. You might state your name, who you are, where you're from, if you would.
Good morning. My name is Emmy Stolman, and I'm from Hutch, and I'm in the Tomadora 4-H club.
I'm Connor Blueva, and I'm from Haven, and I'm in the Haven 4-H club.
I'm Catherine Sunkin. I'm the 4-H agent, and I'm here in Hutch.
And we are here on behalf of the Reno County 4-H ambassadors.
First of all, we wanted to thank you guys for all of your support throughout this past year. We definitely wouldn't be as successful without your guys' support.
And we are here to invite you to the Reno County 4-H fair. It will be July 24th through the 29th at the Kansas State Fair. And we'll leave you guys with some schedules and some little goodie bags that we use.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Keep up the good work. We'll move down to item four on the agenda, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comments this morning that would like to speak? Well, seeing none, we'll move on to item five. Any additions or revisions to the agenda from anyone? No? All right. We'll keep moving. Item six, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve that? Motion by Commissioner Freezen. Did I hear one down here? Would you like seconded by Commissioner Hearst? Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. If you've got an agenda with you, you'll see we've got a exec session on that we need to run into. How many minutes we need to do that for, probably? About 15 minutes. Hate to do that to the crowd, folks, but we'll probably... We need to go over a couple of things here. If you don't mind, we'll come back in. We'll go to exec session and come back in and resume the meeting here in minutes. I'll make a motion here. Motion to move the board to enter executive session until 10:20, that work? 9:20. Okay, that's a long time. That's more than 15. 9:20 with the county administrator, county counselor. The subject matter to be county employee performance, and the justification for executive session is to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. So I have a motion. Commissioner Bogner, seconded by Commissioner Freezen. Well, at this time, we'll head to exec session. We'll be back in 15 minutes. And reopen this meeting, call it back to order. We're going to move on to number eight on the agenda, ADA Public Hearing for Reno County Water District Yoder Loan and Financing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rosemary Saunders from Ranson Financial Group in Wichita, working with county staff to complete an application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment State Revolving Loan Program for funding for the water project to connect Yoder Water to City of Hutchinson. At least, that's the plan at the moment, I believe, unless we come up with another alternative. But part of that application process is to conduct a public hearing to inform the public that we are applying for those funds. We published the notice in the Ninnisca Valley News on June 7th, as required by the program, and so 30 days later is when we, at least, we can hold this public hearing. So that is why we're here today to talk to you Commissioners and ask your permission to proceed with the loan application.
Questions or comments?
Did we also publish that on the website? Okay. Because I know we had told the public we were going to start doing that.
Yes, Randy?
You would need to open the public hearing and then see if there's comments and then close it.
Appreciate you. Thank that. Well, this time, we'll open it for public comment as an official public hearing, if there's anyone here that'd like to comment. Do we got Jeopardy music?
If there's no comments, I can explain it.
Seeing none, we'll close the meeting.
And that doesn't create any problems for us since we've said publicly that we're going to put it on the website, or? No? Okay.
That's a courtesy. We are trying to do it more often, but the statute requires the publication, and we've done that.
Right. Okay. Perfect. And just for the commission's knowledge, this loan is kind of required, the $1 million, estimated $1 million project to connect to the city of Hutchinson for that line to get to the Yoder, the well that we have. I believe we have a $600,000 grant that we have received, so we still have to finance $400,000. The loan is for the full amount, just for, I think, logistical purposes to make sure that we have enough to cover it. And this will be a 20... If we get this, it's a 20-year loan at a relatively low interest rate. I believe it's between 2.5% and 3% for 20 years. So it'd be for about $400,000. There's really no other mechanism right now to finance this project, so.
And for the Commissioners' information, that loan forgiveness is the... What he's talking about, that would come off at the tail end of the project. As Mr. Hartington says, they want to make sure we have the full amount available for us for the construction.
I didn't know if we could pick that up, if you really needed to be at the mic to reset to say that. I'd appreciate it, just so it's on public record.
Sorry.
That's okay.
What Mr. Hartington was talking about is what they call loan forgiveness, and it's because there is the nitrate issue there with, within the Yoder system. And so this is correcting that by being able to hook it up to a safe potable water source, and that's why loan forgiveness is available for the project. It's basically 30% up to $1 million on a project, and so that is applied at the tail end of the project, once again, so that we have all the funds available for construction that we need, and then it is amortized down with the loan forgiveness at the end of the project.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you for stating that.
And just so the commission knows, I know the city and the county are working together on a, I guess, the cost to get the water from Yoder, or from Hutchinson to Yoder. The city sent us a contract, and we had a couple of questions. We sent that back to them last week, and we're hoping to get that in front of the city council and county commission sometime in August or September.
Okay. For comments or questions? If not, somebody want a motion to accept this? Propose them? We closed public comment hearing a little bit ago. Yeah, because there was none. Yeah. Authorizing completion application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a loan from Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. I don't... Resolution number what was it? 2024-19.
I would move to approve resolution number 2024-19, as presented by staff.
Okay, appreciate that. Commissioner Hearst? Commissioner Bogner, seconds? Any final questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes five to zero. Business Items under nine nine A, Residency Policy for Department Heads. They call it, Randy, open this here a little bit.
Okay. In front of you and Helen Foster, the HR Director's here, also given explanation, but we have a current residency policy that requires all appointed directors to live inside Reno County. And if they don't currently live in there, they have eight months to relocate to Reno County. So as we've had some past directors retire, and we'll probably have more in the coming years, I wanted to have a chance to bring this in front of the Commission to, I guess, debate, discuss whether there's the willingness to make some revisions to this policy that allows for some variations in the eight months and the residing in Reno County. And Helen, do you want to explain a little more?
The new policy is just placing some exceptions and provisions in there for undue hardships that they could take through the county administration, administrator for commission approval. So it's just more to, to open that area up so that we're not restricting who we can bring in as a department head and giving a little more aptitude to the fact that there might be some of those little nuances that we need to have exceptions for.
Okay.
And, and then, so you know, there is one current nuance of with the eight months, that we have a director that has been hired that probably can't move for at least ten months, and this eight months may become an issue. So that's another reason I've kind of asked for the ability to have exceptions that would come to the, to my office. For a director, if they needed an exception, they would come, make the formal request to me. I would then have a recommendation and take it to, to the County Commission for final decision.
Okay. Appreciate that. Anything else?
No, I, just typically leases are six months, twelve months, so I'm not really sure where the eight months came in there. But it does, it does create a problem when somebody signed a lease for twelve months.
Okay. Thank you, Helen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
My comment is, is a landlord most leases normally are for twelve months. And so from that standpoint, I think that's a good point to look at, to have recommendations from the administrator.
Anyone else?
So would leases be the only reason we would need to extend that? Like?
I don't know. At least is the first one that comes to mind. I think there are, eight months just sticks out to me. As someone who doesn't, just reading legal documents all the time, twelve months makes a lot of sense. There could be other contractual issues that I, you know, there's a whole universe of things that could come into play, but just twelve, I think a lot of people would be used to seeing a twelve month residency requirement versus eight just kind of sticks out in my head as a strange number to use, I guess. I can't give you a better answer than that, but that's why.
Maybe that was back when the big eight existed.
I don't know. I, I, it, six, you know, if you were really, if the county was just really demanding that someone move immediately, you'd probably see something like three months or something really tight, which we're not recommending. If you're not going to do that, then I think twelve months gives, twelve months would be a very reasonable time for anyone to relocate, in my opinion.
Randy, you might just stay for public if you would, just to give flexibility for those living outside of the county to come in, or is still residency required with flexibility for time?
The policy that's recommended, that's in front of you, would also allow for, if there's certain circumstances, that, I guess, family reasons or there's a reason, a candidate that, you know, goes through the process and is, would be chosen and hired, if there's a reason that they can't move to Reno County, maybe they have their spouse that works somewhere else, or they're in between, you know, locations where they need to be, or they live, you know, in McPherson County, close to Inman. They may be even closer than people that'll live in Turon in the county, but it kind of would come down to a case by case basis. If they had a legitimate reason to not be able to move, or a reason not to move to Reno County, that they would have, it would open it up to where they could make an application to me, bring a request, and of course, they would do that before they were hired, but, and say, here's the reason. It's, I just bought a house, didn't know this job was going to come up, it's great. Or maybe, you know, living in, I'll just use Inman as an example because it's pretty close, you know, spouse works in McPherson, they want to work here in Hutchinson in Reno County, and they want to split the difference on the mileage. I mean, there's a lot of things that could take place that would, if they were the top candidate, if they were someone that we really wanted to hire, and the Commission agreed this is the person they would want to hire, but I would hate to not be able to hire, hire someone just because, you know, they live ten miles outside of the county.
Randy, another thing that, this hasn't come up yet, but it could, we, if we had an existing department head who, who was already working here and had some sort of life situation where they wanted to move a little bit further out of the county, currently our policy doesn't allow it, but you could get a scenario where somebody, you know, wanted to work for the, continue working for the county, but had a reason why they wanted to live a little bit further, just across the county line, that flexibility would come into play there, too, if we had a new policy.
Or it'd also be the other, if it's a current employee that lived outside the county, because that's residency requirements, isn't required for all employees, but if they live outside, they're an internal candidate and we want to hire them, you know, would we make them move into the county for that?
And then, and then I think it even goes kind of further than that, too, with more people caring for their parents. If you had somebody that had a parent in Wichita that they were caring for, it makes sense for them to still live over there where they can care for their parent, too. So that's what these exceptions are really built to do, is to kind of tailor for some of those little nuances for, especially medicals. I mean, those are something that we need to try to accommodate.
And some of those examples are for people that already live in the general area. I would say that there would not be a reason if someone lived in Kansas City, Oklahoma City, Denver, and they were going to come to Reno County, there'd be no reason to let, say, oh, it's okay to live in Wichita.
Right.
Then we would definitely want to require that they, if they're moving from a distance and they're already moving, in my opinion, they should move into Reno County. But if they already have a residency somewhere else, there may be a, a reason that's legitimate to, I guess, give them an exception to this.
And just for me, if you don't mind, for clarification and probably for the public, I just, sometimes we read this, we think about this, we talk about it, we come here and we don't convey what we maybe are really thinking, too, but preferential treatment's given to those living in the county as far as employment, if they're qualified and fit the needs.
Yes. All else equal, if they go through the, like, an assessment center or the hiring process, the interview process, and, you know, it's equal, they're both qualified, the Reno County residence, resident does have the preference.
Okay, appreciate that. Any other question? Mr. Weitzel?
Yeah, so, so my thought on this is, you know, I hear, you know, that, you know, about different scenarios and things like that. But when I was, when I was on the Haven School Board, the number one predictor of whether or not somebody would stay with us long term was whether or not they lived in the area. If they, I mean, like, because we always did exit interviews and time after time after time, when you look at the exit interviews, like, the drive was too far. So I think we're setting us, ourselves up for losing good people if we don't make them move to the area. And then, too, the department heads have a lot of power as far as, like, recommending things and doing different things. And, I mean, call me, call me crazy, but I think that if you're going to set policy for the county, you ought to live under the policies you set. So, you know, I mean, I, I don't, I don't mind on a case by case basis, you know, maybe extending it a little bit, you know, like, if somebody's got a lease, you know, or for something like that, or they can't sell their house, or, you know, something like that. But I think the goal should be to have people be citizens of the community they represent. That's, that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Rachel Weitzel? Anything further? Anybody else? Mr. Bogner?
As, as far as John's statement, I am understanding correctly that, that we will have the final say. And, and should there not be a good reason for this, we can say, no, you've got to abide by the current policy and live here within that eight months or within that, whatever reason we, we contemplate. So that would cover John's deal, right?
Right. If the policy's changed, then it's, the Commission has the final decision. Just like on any appointment, you guys really have that final decision anyways, but you would, you would know whether an exception is needed, and you would have that, that would be your decision.
I thought it gave the decision-making power to you.
No, not the way I read it, John. The way it reads, he will, he will have a recommendation for us. The final say is with us, or whoever happens to be in these seats.
Right.
It's on the screen. If you're in a position, you can see it. It's under three, it's the second sentence.
Yeah.
Is this a change or just a brand new policy?
It's a change. The current policy, let me see, well, the current policy basically says the, any director must live in Reno County with, or move within eight months. Has a little bit more, but it is a current policy.
Well, the one, this is more of a procedural thing, but the one thing I would ask again is we, looks like somebody started to redline this, but if, if it could actually be redlined so we know, we can see what's changed. It's really hard to see what's changed when it's not redlined, but I'd, motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Motion by Commissioner Friesen, does it second?
Yeah.
So you said second by your movement. Any final comments? Questions? I don't, I'll throw one out. I don't particularly have an issue with this. I know it's particularly difficult in this day and age to find the proper person for the position, but I'm one of these people that if you have a stake in a community, you need to be a taxpayer here, and I really believe as directors, you're always required to do that. That's, that's really a good thing. And, and as you stated, Commissioner Weitzel, a lot of times, they find that when they live here instead of living outside of here. But I understand there is some situations, so, I mean, I'm okay with it, because times have changed, they really have, so.
And Commissioners, I will make another comment. In addition to, if this passes, you guys have that final say, but also with the appointment of appointed directors, I make recommendations and you give consensus, but you do have also that final say of kind of letting me know whether I can move forward with a hire or not.
Yeah, appreciate it. Further comment? Not, let's take a roll call for that motion.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
No.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Was that a nay or yeh? Okay. Passes four to one. Let's move into nine B, Presentation of the Audit. I see some ladies here that are just dying to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jamie Beneshek. I have Alexis Crispin with me here today, and we'll go over your audit report with you this morning. Do you have it on there?
I do, and I don't know.
Do you want me to just do it? I can do that.
So it is on the other tab, the actual audit is.
Here?
Yes.
Got it. That works. All right, so page one is our independent auditor's report. You'll see here, adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. This essentially means that we do not issue an opinion on U.S. GAAP. Your audit is not on the GAAP basis. You actually follow the regulatory basis, which is in this paragraph here. So an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis. This is a clean audit opinion. Unmodified is the best type of opinion that we can issue, and it essentially means that your financial statements are materially correct. So the regulatory basis also is how you prepare your budget, so the audit very nicely transitions into the budget. So, again, a clean audit opinion here. Page four is next. This one's kind of hard to read, but this is your summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. So on the left side, you start with the beginning unencumbered cash for 2023. You add in your receipts, subtract your expenditures to get to your ending unencumbered cash for the 2023 year. On page five is the totals, and so the beginning of 2023, you started with sixty-one million eight fifty-eight, and you ended the year with sixty-four million two ten. So an increase of about two point three million in total unencumbered cash, so that's a total unencumbered cash for the entire county. It's not one specific fund. Each fund increases and decreases based on the activity for the year. One fund that did see a notable increase was the general fund. And so again, this is, these are the numbers that you'll start the 2025 budget with, and so if you're not familiar with them, I think you will be pretty soon as Randy takes you through the budget. So, any questions so far? Starting on page seven is the notes to the financial statements. Our auditing standards require us to put specific items in writing to supplement the numbers that we just took you through. So a couple of notes to pay attention to on page ten. We talk about your cash balances here, and we do note that at the end of 2023, the county's funds were not 100% secure by FDIC or pledged securities. That is almost like a blip in time, that one day it was not secured. But since then, the Treasurer's Department has put procedures in place to contact the bank on high-volume days to make sure that it is 100% secured. So that pledged securities and the FDIC is to protect the county in case the bank goes up, goes under, that all of your money is secured. So that has been corrected.
Question on?
I wanted to add on that, the dollar.
You may go to the podium, sit that way.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. And this is reflected in writing in the report. On the last day of the year, there was a million four of pledgings in transit that did not arrive until the first business day of January, and that left us five hundred and something thousand unsecured, but was solved, you know, when business opened on the next day. So the procedures that the new Treasurer has put in place are very robust. I'm very pleased with what the bank has been working on with them. It's very routine now in times of high tax collections. So we had an opportunity in May when the second half of taxes were due, and that created another peak cash volume, to see how this would work, and it was great. I'm very pleased with what the Treasurer did. So this was a blip, like, like Jamie said.
Leslie, can you just say who you are?
Oh, sorry. Leslie Roterer. I'm the audit liaison. My official job title is financial specialist.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie.
Question on that, the, is it automatic now? Because if, if you have to call, seems like you've already missed the, the risk window. Like, do they automatically adjust coverage?
Oh. Yes, so we have a sweep account that is the SEDAR's arrangement, C-D-A-R-S. I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's an arrangement all across the nation where a government entity can place funds in our local bank, and they, it's basically farmed out through this procedure to be all FDIC coverage CDs that don't go above the FDIC coverage. And so there's an automatic overnight reckoning in or out on how much you need in that, and that was what the, the automatic was the one that took the one extra day. We've, we had a very high day of collections on December 31st, which was what was unusual in '23. That also happened to be the day the former Treasurer was retiring, and it just wasn't something that, that was realized until it was after the deadline. But now also, the, the pledgings of securities have been increased by about five million dollars at our main bank that covers this. And then also on days of high collections, by one or two o'clock in the afternoon, the Treasurer and that department at the bank have an ongoing relationship where the number is calculated that may require additional pledging. So we're really kind of triple-covered now. And that's, that's how you understand it, too, from what we've, okay?
Any other comments on that? Any other comments on that? All right. Page, page 14 is note number 10. It's stewardship, compliance, and accountability. Here it is. Um, so there is one fund, the payroll clearing fund, that had a negative balance at the end of the year. This is, um, a reimbursement basis-type fund, and so it is normal for it to be negative, and then it, it reconciles itself come January, the first payroll in January. So, um, it was negative, but there's, that's just how the fund works. And so we're required to note it here, but there's nothing that can be done about it. And then the next page is page 19. This is a summary of your debt for the end of 2023. At the end of the year, um, the county had a total of 14 million 42,000 in total debt, so that includes, um, any bonds, temporary notes, and leases that the, the county had. So then after this page, it, the audit goes through each individual fund. So for instance, if you wanted to see the general funded detail, you could flip to that page. There weren't any specific funds that I planned to go over today unless you had specific questions on those, so. Alex will now take you through the single audit, so because the county had over 750,000 of federal expenditures, there has to be a separate audit over the federal expenditures by themselves, and so that's what Alex will take you through next. Oh, I'm not gonna be able to scroll.
Yeah.
We'll get there eventually. Okay. Okay, so the first page that we're gonna look at for the single audit is page 114, and this is the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. So this is where we would note if you guys had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we had discovered throughout the financial audit, um, procedures. We do not have any. You guys have an unmodified, um, opinion on that, and so there's nothing to note here. The next page we'll take a look at is page 116, and this is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major program. So this is where we're specifically looking at the major program that we selected and tested. Um, for you guys, that was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And this is, again, where we'd note if there were any deficiencies noted. We did not have any, so again, an unmodified opinion for this. Page 119, I believe, is where your guys' CIFA starts, so that's your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Um, and it is a total of 5 million 22,000. And if you're curious about what that breakdown is between the various federal agencies and the different programs that you guys have, this is where you would look for that. Page 121 is just some required footnote to go with the CIFA. There's nothing, um, unusual or that we'd want to point out there. And then 122 is kind of a summary of the single audit. So you'll see here the financial statement section. It goes over, um, you have that unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. You didn't have any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or non-compliance material noted. And then in the federal award section, again, no deficiencies noted, unmodified opinion. Um, and it does note that that coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds is the program that we tested. Um, well, only other thing on this page, you guys do not qualify as a low-risk oddity. That's simply because you are not preparing your books on the GAAP basis. Nothing that you would need to make changes for or be concerned with. It just means that we have to make sure we test, um, a slightly higher percentage of your federal dollars than if you were low-risk. So then, no findings to note here, and, um, if nobody has any questions, I'm gonna let Jamie go over the loose-leaf letter. It is, okay. Well, again, there's not a whole lot to go over in the, um, we call this the governance letter, so, uh, again, auditing standards require us to communicate a few different things to you in this letter. Difficulties encountered in performing the audit? We did not encounter any difficulties. Um, I, I'm really happy and, and proud of the relationship that we've formed with Reno County, with Leslie, and with Randy, and with all of the departments. Um, everything has, 99% of everything that's sent to us is sent through a secure portal that Leslie, um, organizes very well, and from all of the items that she receives from the departments, and, um, then we come on-site for a day, and so everyone is always very respectful and helpful and quick in getting us answers. Um, I, I, I think I say this every year, but I think it gets better every year. We get, um, we get better at our relationship and, um, the communication always is, is great between us, and so, um, the audit went really well. There were no findings, as we've noted, on the single audit or the financial statement audit, and so just overall, very happy with the audit results. Um, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, as I mentioned, there are, there are none. Um, and so this letter is very clean, just like the rest of what we've gone over today. So are there any questions, um, over anything that we've talked about?
You're not making my lights light up, so I don't think so. I think you've done a good job. Appreciate it.
Well, and like I said, a lot of it comes down to the departments doing a great job keeping their books, and then Leslie, the liaison, and making sure she's got 80% of our questions answered before she even sends it to us, and so, um, she does a great job helping us get the audit done, too.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
I would just, you know, thank Leslie again, as always. Um, I've always heard good thanks. I don't see what she does all day, but, um, I do know being through some of these audits, um, of size like this, you can really have messy ones if you're not organized internally. So, um, it was a credit to the county staff and leases. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you for saying that.
My philosophy is no backs on it. We're clean. Let's keep it that way.
Yes.
And I, I mean, some backstory, I think Leslie was hired because we had some messy ones, and ever since she's been here, it's been great, so.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I have a great working relationship with all the departments and the counties, or at least from my perspective. If they don't agree with that, they, they keep it to themselves, but they are, uh, really great about answering any questions and any objections and don't hold anything back from the auditors. You know, I, I try to even be overly picky so that we're aware of everything that could be a problem. And Randy and I encounter and communicate with the audit team, uh, during the year when there's anything unusual, um, or any kind of transaction that's gonna be a new thing, new funds. So some of the business on there today will be discussed with all the firm, and, um, yeah, it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, I guess we'll move to 10A.
We have the manager that was intentional to sign.
Oh.
Do we need a, a motion?
A motion to accept the audit.
Motion to accept, yeah. I forgot that. Do we have a motion to accept the budget audit as presented? Mr. Friesen?
Hold a second.
Mr. Weitzel seconds. Any other comments? If not, uh, roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
All right, motion passes five to zero. Do I need to sign this now, or get it to him? We can do it after the meeting? We won't be too much longer if you want to hold on. We got some other stuff to sign.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I know I'm sure that everyone was able to hear what Leslie said, but to summarize maybe a little bit of what you said is the working relationship between the financial administration and directors is what makes the job easier and easy to understand, and I don't know, any of it's easier to understand, but the working relationship developed internally helps the auditors tremendously. And, um, just as well we're not on GAAP fund, GAAP.
Yeah. Well, they do.
To add, to add on to what you said, the auditors have.
Leslie, you may go to the mic.
Yeah.
So we don't, so we don't have to summarize, because if I summarize, it's not gonna be anywhere close to what you said.
Now, to add on to what Commissioner Hurst just said, the audit firm knows how to get in touch with any director or accountant, and they certainly are free to do that. Everything does not have to funnel through me, and the directors, uh, might have to ask for their phone number, but they could get in touch with them also, so. Um, yeah, it's, I spend a lot of my year doing this, but, but I'm not the only one who works on it, so.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Randy? 10A?
Yeah, the county budgets. So at the last. At the last commission meeting, the, you guys voted to approve notification to the county clerk to exceed the R and R to have the maximum mill levy budget be a flat mill levy, um, for 2025. What we need today, because we didn't have it in front of you at that time, is to actually schedule, to pass document scheduling, the public hearing date for the R and R and the public hearing. So, let me see. So we would need an approval of notice of revenue-neutral rate intent with a maximum mill levy of 35.762 for the Reno County budget. And then another motion, we needed the same for the special districts. Special districts include the fire districts. They're the ones that have mill levies. Um, but in the budget, even though they don't have a mill levy, are the utility districts or water and sewer districts. All of the fire districts will need to go above the R and R for 25, their 2025 budget. That would be the second motion to approve notice, a notice of revenue-neutral rate intent with maximum mill levy specified in the summary page that I'll show in a, a couple minutes here. And then we'll need another motion that sets the revenue-neutral rate and budget hearing date for both the county and special district budgets, budgets to be either our last meeting in August, which is August 28th, 2024, or the first meeting in September, September 11th, during our regular meeting at 9:00 a.m. In the packet, you will see a summary, I think it's a three or four-page summary of the county budget and then a small section on the special districts budget. I'm not gonna read over all this again, um, just because there's a lot of details of how we got, or what the budget kind of highlights, and how staff got the budget to be a flat mill levy, knowing that the county commission may want to keep cutting, and you will have time to do that in August or early September during the pub, the public hearing, or you can do it even before, but once we, once this gets approved by the county commission, goes to the county clerk. The county clerk then puts it in the notification that's sent to all taxpayers for all, any taxing entity in Reno County or that has taxes in Reno County will, they will receive the notification of the R and R with all the public hearing days for the different entities that are going above the R and R. So at that point, the citizens will see the intent for Reno County, if this is passed again, to have a ta, um, tax levy maximum of 26.5 million, which is that, um, this, the flat mill levy. And it'll show that, what kind of increase that'll be to each tax, taxpayer, taxing property. So when they see that, that, they'll think that may be the budget, but again, that's just, that's the maximum. After that goes out, you still have a chance by September, early September, to make modifications. You can go down, but you can't go up in different tax levy funds. Wanted to see if there's any questions on, first on the county budget, not this, and then we'll go to the special districts.
Mr. Bogner?
So, what we want the public to know is we're setting a maximum in order for us to get some data we don't have at this moment, or we didn't have when this process started. The actual budget hopefully will be less than what's stated here, but we're setting a cap, and we're buying some time so we get some real figures to work off of. Lot of what was worked off of to come up with this, we didn't have all, ever, it's my understanding, we didn't have final numbers from the state at the time. Some of this was done. It buys us time to get all the permanent data to come up with the, is what we're really doing, is buying time.
When you had the pu, the budget session, we didn't have the valuation numbers, the assessed valuation at that time. So the commission did not have this sheet, this summary sheet, updated to know what the request, how that impacted the mill levy. We have cut around $3 million. Staff has changed $3 million worth of, some of it in capital, different areas, and some of it in our cash balance to get to a flat mill levy. The budget requests that you did see at, I believe it was at the end of June, or end of May, end of May, you did see the budget request. So you have those numbers, but what you didn't have is them showing up in the state budget form. So this is the maximum recommended budget. And, and you're right, Commissioner Bogner. Now, you'll have other numbers. You can look at the budget expenditures, the request, and have discussion with fellow commissioners. The commission can say what changes you want to make to that budget. There are still maybe a few areas. I think the cash has been reduced as much as what staff will recommend, making adjustments to the revenues and to the cash. The rest of the changes that you would, you might consider will be actual expenditures, whether it's positions, cap, more capital, pay raises, whatever it is, but that will be up to you at the end of August, early September, and you'll have the full budget document by then.
I don't want to be particular, but you said conversations with other commissioners, and I assume you definitely meant that in a public forum.
Yes, I meant that as a.
I, I know. I wanted to clarify, because I don't want to be picking up on that and thinking something ill-intents, so.
No, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I meant that as, you'll have the dialogue here at a future meeting.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else?
We got a question.
Yes, Commissioner Friesen.
Which one? Um, I missed the one, the cash changes. Which page is that?
I believe I gave a summary. Um, it's mainly right here, kind of, um, cash balance reserves for the general fund is about 15, 15% of the fund's expenditures after you remove the cash, cash-forward amount from the expenditures. To get to that amount, it's just under two months. The current budget is about 19.6% or two and a half months. That's the actual budgeted cash-forward amount. That's not any other cushion that might exist with revenues, or, and that's also assuming that 100% of the expenditures come in are spent, 100% of what's budgeted, and that revenues are only 100% of what we budget.
Did you have, um, the cash balances change from?
I didn't have specific numbers. Um, I just looked at 24 to 25s. I know that 23s, 22s, if you go back, they were, we've reduced, to keep the R and R or close to R and R over the past few years, that number has consistently decreased. I think at one time it was closer to 40% of, 30, 40% of the budget.
Well, let me, let me back up a step. Are we simply just providing direction on this, um, revenue-neutral thing today? We're not really talking about the budget.
Right. You're just setting the maximum. That, that way, there's more time. If you say that you're not going, going to exceed the R and R for the county budget, then I believe the budget has to be adopted. The public hearing's August, it has to be adopted, and you, if someone comes in, or you would have to actually make that decision.
But we're, we're, like, if I see things in here that I want to talk about, that's for a different meeting. Okay. I had another question, but, so the, okay, so we're just doing revenue neutral. But if, on the cash thing, when we have the discussion, I.
You want the actual cash balance?
Because I know, like, I know, like, when we're, I think, when, this is complicated, number one, it's very complicated. We don't do this every day, we do this once a year, some of us, it's our first or second time. So, one of the things that happens, I mean, you know, a lot of people are used to kind of a normal, like, business budget. We, we have a fund accounting, which is confusing, but the, um, the thing that sometimes you do, um, is you reduce cash balances versus actually cut expenses. And that does the same thing at the end of the day, right? And that's just your choice. But I think generally, when we say we want to cut or reduce, we're trying to reduce ongoing expenses, not create a situation where we run off a cliff because we have no more cash. We're still running at the same expenditure rate, we're just digging deeper and deeper into our cash reserves until there's nothing left. I know you're not running us off a cliff, but, um, I go back to, in our review, can we see, how much of our budget reductions are simply uses of cash availability versus actual expense reduction?
Yeah, and I have that in the summary, that's kind of shown for the twenty-five, it's not put in a table, but it is listed in here, but if you want future years, yeah, we can look at that. We do look at kind of, um, kind of the GFOA kind of recommends, I think about two months, month, month and a half, two months worth of general fund cash balance. But we have so many, like you said, it's complicated, there's so many different areas where we have cash.
Transferring cash and it's.
We, right.
Well, could you, i- is it a, are we going to get useful information if you took, we don't need every fund, because there's a lot of small funds.
It's mainly the general fund that has the cash.
But if you take the big funds, right, and you show what our change in cash is, is that in the budget?
I, I could pull the various budgets and look at the, um.
And it's okay to say, that's not going to help you any.
Well, it's going to be confusing, because I can look at the budgets and the cash forward amount that we budget. I can give you the history of that amount.
Yeah.
But there's other areas of the cash, because even when you look at like the audit, you'll see that our beginning cash and ending cash, we go up and we are very healthy. But again, the, but when you get to the budget, it assumes you're spending all of it, and that you're not collecting. So, there's a difference between the actual cash, if you like, look at audits, and what's chosen our budget versus what we budget.
What I'm really asking is you dumb it down for us, and, like, the, there's like two things going on. If, if you're reducing the total budget, it's either you're digging into cash or you're actually reducing expenses, that's the two things. So, if you can somehow show that in a dumbed-down way that we can understand, that's what I'm asking. I don't know how, how you can present that, but.
Yeah, I, I can, definitely for twenty-five's budget, but I'll look at his, historically, what we've done. For twenty-five's budget, we did reduce some capital expenditure, some vehicle purchases, um, some other capital items. We moved some to reserve monies that we have. The sheriff bought something that was originally in the CIP with one of his special, his commissary funds, that's a non-budgeted fund, so some of those changes were made, the long-term cuts.
Shifting around, I don't think we, it doesn't, that doesn't do, we don't care. It's like, are we actually reducing next year's expenditures? Or are we just simply?
Not operational, oper, you did capital, but again, that'll be future years, it'll have to be.
Those are the high-level points I think we should hear, like, you know, okay, we're not putting as much in capital funds, we're not actually reducing any of our material expenses. That would be helpful for me.
Yeah, because the operational costs continue to go up.
That's a fair point.
And, and that's where it would be commission direction, if there's true cuts to operations, it's,
Okay.
It's more than just the commodities and contractuals, there's nowhere else to cut there, it's personnel.
Well, this is my last question, I think, Ms. Chair. So the, just to, Commissioner Bogner tried to sum it up, again, it's a complicated issue. Your recommendation here today is what of the three options?
Well, there's, I only gave one op, option, the recommendation, there's three motions. But the recommendation is to, um, notify the county clerk that you're go, like you did pass at the last meeting, the intent to exceed the R and R with a maximum budget of twenty-six, of tax levy amount of twenty-six million, five hundred thousand, one hundred ninety dollars, which equates to thirty-five point seven six two mills.
Which is compared to what was our mill levy last year?
Thirty-five point seven six two, it's flat.
Okay, so. So, we're going to collect, and under your recommendation to, we're going to collect more in taxes because property rates have increased.
It's a three point seven percent increase, it's around nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars more in tax levy.
Our revenue's going to increase by three point.
Seven percent.
Seven percent, but the mill levy is not going to go up.
The rate of taxation will not go up.
To notice because our revenue is increasing.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I have to walk through it myself, if you guys need to do the same, so.
Thank you.
No, and I, I will say, one thing that, that frustrates me to no end is when the press says, or, or administrators from like schools and things say, oh, we're not raising taxes. But, um, you know, I, I think that the press should report that a, uh, a, a mill levy that is flat is, in this case, a three point seven percent tax increase. Because I think it's dishonest to the public to say we're not raising taxes. And, and I will say, the county, the county doesn't do this, I don't think, but, like, I, I, I hear schools do it all the time, and they're like, well, we're not raising taxes, we're keeping the mill levy flat. Well, if you keep the mill levy flat, at least at the county level, it's a three point seven percent tax increase. So that means that on your property, you're going to pay more every month than you did the previous year, under this plan.
Yep. Commissioner Hurst?
I found it very interesting in going through this, this information that you provided, was the fact that in our, in the meetings I've attended over the past couple or three years, is the fact that we're getting really, even though the number may look large in reserve, when you look at it from a whole standpoint, you're getting really close to being shaky. Most of the, of the administration and people that have presented at meetings I've been to are looking at, to feel safe, they're looking at three to four months. Three months being the minimum, even though the, this, this association says two months. So I think that in case of disaster, we hope it never happens, and, but, but you need to, need to be conscious of that. And the other thing I saw, very interesting to me, was the fact that if we look at our expenditures compared to, inflation rate, uh, I, I, and the budget, uh, we, we were looking at negative one point three two, I believe, uh, to negative nine point one four. That our difference in what we actually spent was under inflation rate by that much over the last four years. And, and if you look at the budget, it's one point three to, uh, five point two one, underneath inflation rate. And what that should tell everybody is that pretty soon it's going to catch up with us. We, we cannot continue to, to spend under inflation continually, it's no different than a household. You have to make decisions with regard to where you're at. And it's pretty tough to continue spending our budget and our tax levies that much under inflation and stay solid. So, that's, that, I thought that was very interesting to me, to look at those two, two figures. And I appreciate staff being able to put those together, because that's, uh, uh, very good information to have as we look at budgets and we look at, at revenue and as we look at expenditures. Yeah, thank you, I missed it again. I would move to approve the approval of a notice, as Randy stated, uh, approval of a notice of revenue neutral rate intent with a maximum levy of thirty-five point seven, seven six two for the Reno County budget.
Second. Second. Further comments or questions? I see, now roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
No.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passed four to one. Second motion on the floor, if somebody want to entertain that motion, Mr. Bogner? Oh, I thought you had figured it out. You run away from me there, Randy.
I'm trying, yeah, I was, didn't know if you wanted to look at the special districts.
Sure.
Just so you kind of see, here's the.
Yes.
Proposed mill levy rates for all those districts. Kind of a comparison.
You don't know the exact increase to be locked into at this time, is what you stated earlier.
Yeah, the, setting the maximum mill levy, that's kind of, I mean, setting the max, but Fire District Two, that again is set by the city of Hutchinson, what they send over to us. So, anyone that's in Fire District Two, if they're not happy with the mill levy, they really need to talk to Hutchinson.
I know that, it was shared with me by someone from that side, the other day, they called me and told me that their intent was to do, in fact, it's intense to do exactly what we're doing, so, so I don't know if I should share that, but I'm going to, so. Questions?
Yes, so, last year, when, um, when Travis came before us, um, you know, I voted to raise the, um, the, the, um, the taxes for the fire districts, and I asked him, I was like, will this be enough to sustain? Are we going to have to raise taxes in the future? And, um, we'll have to roll tape on this, but I'm pretty sure he told me that we wouldn't need another tax increase for several years if we raised it to what they recommended to last year. So, and he's not here to ask, but I would like to ask him what changed, because it was my understanding, other than Fire District Two, which we don't really have a lot of control over, that, um, that what we raised him to last year was sufficient to, um, to, uh, to cover things for a few years.
And, yeah, he would probably need to answer that, probably on the expenditure side, the increase may not change that much. What changes is the valuation of each district, depending on whether it goes up, or it goes up very much, that has an impact on what the mill levy is. So, that's one of the things, even last year, he wouldn't be able to predict the future evaluation numbers. But expenditures, I think they're, they probably did go up a little bit, I mean, but, we try to keep their expenditures relatively plow. We put money in for them to have reserves, for their capital equipment reserves, and then the, we look at cost, annual cost comparisons of previous years of what it takes to run the department.
Right, but we are, we are recommending an increase in expenditures, though, right?
Yes, it would, I'm, I'm sure all have some level of increase.
Almost positive, he said that that wouldn't be the case last year. So I'll have to go back and watch the meeting, but I'm, I'm almost positive that that's what he said.
Commissioner Bogner?
So our best option to take care of what John's talking about is to pass this today, and then in our further, just because of time constraints.
Right.
And then, as we talked about in the county budget itself, figure out where we can trim that later on.
Right, this is the same as the county budget, this is the maximum, you can go down. This is not saying this will be the budget for 2025, it just will not be anything more than this. This would be the absolute most highest maximum it could be, you still can make, we'll have Travis come in, you still can make cuts to expenditures and the mill levy, but you cannot go back up.
That's what I was asking, we would be able to question him, or John would be.
Yeah, and, and just, just for, just for, just for the record, you know, I am very supportive of our firefighters, um, you know, they do a lot, um, and they deal with a lot. But I'm also concerned with the taxpayers, and, you know, I want to make sure that they've got the equipment they need, which was why I voted to, to raise taxes last year on the fire districts, because there was some equipment concerns and things. But, you know, I, I guess I just need to know what changed and why we're raising, raising taxes again.
Further comments, questions?
With regard to District Two, do we get, uh, do we get a financial statement regarding from District Two on expenditures and revenue?
Yes, I believe they.
They provide you that?
They provide us information on their cost, yes.
Okay.
But for the public, this is, I think it's around twenty-three percent of the total Hutchinson Fire District budget.
Yeah.
Based on valuation comparisons of what's in Fire District Two compared to what's in the incorporated city. But what Fire District Two pays for goes toward everything within the fire, Hutch Fire Department for all costs, including those in the city, so.
Anything else? If not, do we have someone wants to make a motion on the second motion there? That's on your screen. Well, I'll motion, we approve, uh, of the notice of revenue neutral rate with the intent with the maximum mill levy specified for each of the county's special districts.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hurst, any final thoughts? Roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
No.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Third motion, we have information we want to look at there, too.
This is just deciding which, uh, meeting you want it on, I would recommend probably the August. In case there are changes, we would have to recalculate before you would actually adopt a budget. That way you hold the public hearing and let anyone that may show up speak, and then you still will have another meeting to make final decisions if you make cuts.
Final cuts and stuff, yeah, okay, all right, somebody make a motion for that one.
I'll move to set an R and R and budgeting hearing date for the county and special districts budgets to be held on August 28th, 2024, during the regularly scheduled meeting, which begins at nine o'clock AM in the Reno County Courthouse Veterans Room.
Motion by Commissioner Whitezel, seconded by Commissioner Bogner, all right. Final thoughts, questions? Not, roll call.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yep, yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Let's move into county commission, well, no, I guess administrator monthly report, I tried to skip you there, Randy, sorry.
That's okay, um, in the packet, I have the monthly reports for the appraiser, automotive department, community corrections, emergency management. Corrections, Emergency Management, Public Health and Human Resources. Any questions on those? The other thing I wanted to mention, just as a reminder, that similar to the Town Hall meeting that, that couple commissioners or three commissioners had Monday in Nickerson, the next ones are Monday, July twenty-second in Arlington at Arlington City Hall, six thirty PM, and then Tuesday, July twenty-third, Pretty Prairie's office, their city office, and that's also at six thirty PM. So, in a couple of weeks, a couple commissioners, two or three will, or any of you can show up. We do notify the public that Quorum may be there, even though you're not, there's no decisions. It's just a chance for some of the commissioners to get feedback from citizens in that area about whether to be zoned or remain in the unzoned areas of Reno County.
And some of the conversation ensued into, obviously zoning for solar and stuff. I think I'll state, make a public statement and probably follow this up a little bit later today, but I may think there's misconceptions. The meetings are strictly pretty much starting out with information to let folks know the rules of zoning and, and perhaps the next meeting will open different little bit, but so that they can make an informed, intelligent decision. I've, I've actually had some people notify me since that meeting the other night and weigh in on it, and so that's, that's good. I'm, I'm glad there's still some activity on that. So, I'd encourage everybody that may see this or listen to it to be there if you're affected by those. I think on the website, we're, before those meetings, we're going to try to post a map of those zoning areas so that folks know. And one of the issues that come up the other night is that three mile zoning outside of the cities that the cities have jurisdiction over. So, kind of, it doesn't really exempt people. It was, you find out, a lot of them live in, you know, in town that has ground outside of town, and so they have an interest in that as well. They should be there, so, but anyway, yeah, thank you, Randy.
Question on that, because, I mean, I'm getting emails about solar again, and I told them to go to the meetings, and I think I just heard you say it's not about solar.
We, we talked about that a little bit, but primarily, I think the reason we wanted to hear this is we wanted to explore the, the avenue of possibly zoning or unzoning that whole area. And, and that would be one feature of that certainly was that, that the zoning that we're working on that could be closed in August sometime could overlay on that if, if they want solar protections or don't want solar protections. And, and quite honestly, it's, it's not one hundred percent one way or the other, so.
Well, I just thought, my observation is, I thought that was the impetus for countywide zoning was just now we're tagging on another overlay, potentially tagging on another overlay, kind of restriction in unzoned area, and the conversation ensued, do, why don't we just zone the whole thing? So, you know, if they're separate and a, if we weren't having the solar debate, would we still be having the zoning debate? I think so.
Yes, I, I believe so because the information out on zoning, I think we all, you correct me, the other two commissioners that were there, a lack, complete lack of knowledge of what zoning is and isn't.
Well, did anybody?
That, that relates back to the fact that, I think it was stated pretty well, and, and Don did a lot of, of good conversation with this, which relates to the fact, just if people want a say or not have a say in.
Did anybody come to the meeting and say, I would like zoning?
Yes.
Yes.
Was it related to solar?
Uh, no. It really came down to personal property protections for intrusions of things that would be zoning violations if they occurred in the future. Some examples given of that was the horse racing south of town, some other intrusions into people's properties that they didn't want. But it did segue into several people speaking that they would not want solar or wind right out their back door. And obviously with making the zoned areas, having a total ban or regulations for limited scale solars and some of the things, if they would choose to go ahead and let us give authorization to public works, and we'd come back as a forum here and talk about it, to give a public works authorization to open a hearing about zoning, certainly they would understand that if they got zoned, then the ones on the other side, it would actually apply to them. It would be a done deal pretty much. Am I correct in that? Mr. Britton? Yeah, he's nodding his head, yes, so.
Well, I just
That would simplify things a whole bunch, but, but I think there's some reasons to be zoned too, so it's some not to, but, you know, go ahead, Mr. Freezin, go ahead.
Well, I, I'll just reiterate, I think we should be careful when we suggest that somebody's property that they own and they do something on that property is somehow intruding on somebody else's property. I mean, it's a very tricky conversation because I can see the argument, but certainly they own the property.
Well, and he spoke to that, a couple of people very well the other night, you know, the, the liberties that they felt like they'd give up and, and that we, I thought it was addressed quite well as to some of the things they have would have a grandfather in clause that would leave things alone, but, and, and certainly I don't, with this myself personally, I can't speak for the other commissioners, I don't want to be intrusive upon people's personal ground, and there was people there spoke to, they just soon leave it the way it is. And, and I think that's what we want to hear. This issue's come up before, but it would simplify things in the county so much and give them certain protections that they, they can't be afforded without being zoned.
Well, do you, I mean, I keep sending the solar people to these meetings. You want me to, is that part of the meeting or not? I don't, not quite clear.
It's going to end up part of zoning, but I think we want to explore off the get-go. If they want to come to these meetings, that's absolutely fine. We want to have, we want to hear from people. Because I think what they're going, we're, we're going to start a different format this next meeting, you know, something we haven't really done, I'll be honest with you. And you learn when you go through these things, we're going to start it with, with a bunch of practical information, what zoning is in Reno County and what we do in zoning, and then so that they'll know we're talking about, would you like to be zoned for these, these particular reasons? And, and then certainly the conversation's going to come up about solar or, you know, even wind, wind even come up the other night. So, it'd be a good place for us to address that again with folks as well, so. And, and in a likelihood, we could stay unzoned and, and they may move to, move to want to have solar or wind out there. We may hear that and come back and talk about that. So, that's, that's kind of things I wanted to hear out of this. Ron, you?
Yeah, I, I, I think that there's hearings coming up on July twenty-ninth with regard to solar, and, and maybe Don can fill us in a little bit on, on his thoughts and comments with regarding this.
Yeah, Don Britton, Director of Public Works. I think to answer your question, Commissioner Freezin, is if somebody's concerned about solar, if they go to these meetings, the question of what being zoned or unzoned would answer the questions on what solar, how solar would be handled.
Yeah. Are you having, are you having public meetings on solar soon?
Whenever the solar, the, the, yes, the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
It's a public hearing on solar.
Do we have that public notice?
Uh, in the zoned area. Because we, we can't have that in the unzoned area. There's not a zoning district for, so that's, yes, that's all, that's why it's the twenty-ninth, twenty-day notice and all that.
What, which type of solar are we talking about?
We're talking about private solar and large-scale solar because limited scale is already approved.
So, the ground mount, just kind of
Ground mount.
Those administrative changes you're making and really don't
So, that's the public hearings on ground mount.
The ground mount stuff is pretty minimal, it sounds like. Okay. Well, has the public notice come out on that yet?
Mm-hmm.
Can you forward that to me? I'll just get that to those people that are inquiring so they know. That's probably a better avenue to put their comments on the record.
So, their concern on solar, being zoned or unzoned, that will answer their concerns.
Okay, thanks.
I was asked where the meeting will be. The public hearing would be Reno County Public Works at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Did they just say the twenty-ninth?
Yes. Twenty-ninth.
Yes, twenty-ninth.
What time now?
Your meeting started, what, five? That starts at four-thirty.
Sorry, Don, thank you.
That will be on a Thursday. Oh, the twenty-ninth, no, that's regular, yeah, it's the twenty-ninth on a meeting. But it's at four-thirty on the twenty-ninth at Reno County Public Works Planning Zoning Commission.
I, I, I know we got it. If you don't mind us putting it at the top of our inbox again, that way I'll, thank you.
Don's doctor won't have to tell him to exercise more after today.
Look at your Fitbit and see how many steps you got in or whatever it is.
You've been sitting long enough, a little exercise is okay.
Yeah. Okay, where was we? That kind of segued into your monthly comments. Well, Commissioner reports.
I, can, can I have a minute?
Oh, do we have, yeah, use your hand.
So, I said it was at four-thirty. We made that public hearing at five-thirty so that people wouldn't have to take off work and stuff and we'd get more of an audience, so that's at five-thirty PM instead of four-thirty. Sorry for the mistake.
That's okay, very good, thank you.
Can you come up again? No, just kidding.
Five-thirty PM.
Glad he don't have anything to throw. Yeah, we'll come down the line. John, I'm going to start with you today.
You know, I don't, I don't have anything this, this one, or this week.
Thanks, because now it's going to rain, we need it. Commissioner Hirst?
I saw in the Hudson Tribune the other day that we have a young lady here in Hutchinson that received a really nice an award, and that's, and I apologize if I misstate her first name, but Elise Jackson, who was crowned at, in, I believe it's in Omaha or Nebraska for this, this area and this region, was National Miss Pre-Teen Award. So, I just wanted to congratulate her. And for age fair, come out and see what the, what all our youth are doing. And it's pretty impressive. And I had the privilege of attending three Community Independence Day, July Fourth celebrations, and I was highly impressed with the work that done by individual citizens with regards to South Hutch, of the three I attended were South Hutch, Arlington and Pretty Prairie. And goes to show you that I think that love where you live and community involvement's still alive here in Reno County and most of our small towns. And I certainly enjoyed watching all the young parents and the kids enjoy just having fun and, and including the high schoolers that were involved. It was just fun to watch them and interact and, and the people all get together and just have a, a good old-fashioned July Fourth celebration. So, I want to thank all those people who made it happen because it was, it was really a great deal. And we talked about taxes, and I think the last report I had was Reno County has the fifteenth lowest taxes in the great, in the state of Kansas. So, that means there's about ninety that are higher.
That's it. I just had one comment or question, the, I was just looking at the calendar and, and I may be traveling again and, and be gone for a meeting. Last time I was gone, and I know this is probably a thing we could just handle with IT, but I thought maybe the other commissioners might have some feedback, but it was, it was okay, but the, you know, the meetings that, like, I'm involved in a lot of virtual meetings, the one that, like, having the ability to see, you know, the commission and then the commission see me, I think would be optimal. Like, right now, I know Commissioner Hirst, you were gone after a surgery, and I think you really struggled with it too and experiencing it. I think if we could just make it more like a true Zoom call to where, you know, whoever's talking comes up on the screen, whether it's the commission, and I can, because I, it's, I don't know what feed we get. It, it, it feels like, doesn't feel like these mics that you're hearing, and there's kind of a delay, and I don't know if, if you guys were able to see me last time I was here, but it wasn't, it wasn't as interactive. Like, I would like the ability for commissioners to be present at meetings, even if they're traveling, if possible, so.
Well, I would love it if you came up on the corner of the monitor or something in that very, yeah, it would be a lot better.
So, I don't think it's a big change, and I can help with that, but it just came to mind since I might be gone again. I don't want to miss the meeting, but I'd rather be traveling with my family than sitting here too, so, but I'm happy to sacrifice some time to be at the meeting, just not physically here, so. I, yeah, I just didn't know if other commi, because I don't know what it was like on the other end, but I just, I felt like I wasn't fully connected with the, the commission, so.
Well, we were pretty sure when Commissioner Hirst was gone that he was eating, we went past lunch that day, he was eating us and talking to us. Not, he was holding out. I remember that.
Randy was hungry that meeting?
I was.
I think that was because somebody was talking too long and I had to go get something to eat.
It wasn't me at that time. Go ahead.
Little experience yesterday, and I'd like to make a comment on law enforcement in this county and some things we don't think about them doing. I was delivering water to a pasture yesterday, and I came back and up there at my pasture gate, the county sheriff's vehicle, lights going, and I thought, oh my, I just came by that way, I wonder what's going on. Drove up and a lady officer, and I apologize for not getting her name, but she's a pretty good cowboy, cowgirl. She had found a calf wandering on that road, and it's a busy county road, and she was just closing the gate. She had gotten that calf eased up into the pasture and out of traffic and for the safety of the people and the calf itself. I will tell the officer, when I started checking, it, we had put, we, the calf went in the wrong pasture, but when I called the owner, his thoughts were just like mine. The public got protected. I called him, told him where his calf was, he'll grab it. He, like me, was glad that she took the initiative to take care of the problem, keep anybody from getting hurt. And that's something we don't think about when we talk about law enforcement. Over the years, I've had several occasions where there've been things like that where animals have gotten out, and, and the guys who own them and the neighbors of guys who own them are very hot. Everybody I've ever known is very helpful. Nobody wants a problem. But, she had the thing well in hand by the time I got there.
Did it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Lot of meetings lately. I want to encourage people to come out to the Town Hall meetings again on those dates that are on our website. I, I do hope we get that, like I say, that map up there. I think that'll be great, that'd be helpful. We didn't get too tortured maybe by the news the other night, but a little confusion as to what it is, and we really do want to talk and hone in on a zoning of those areas. So, if, if you are listening, that's kind of what the topic will be. It may segue a little bit, but a couple of other things, there've been several meetings lately that, a couple of them especially, that Mr. Partington and myself have been in on, and I think some, I wasn't able to make one at noon yesterday, but I think some exciting things are going on and for the county as, as, at large. We had a meeting here a while back with the mayors in South Hutch, and I thought that was a pretty enlightening meeting. I'll share a little bit, a little bit of testimony, some of the outlying communities, they would like to be partnering somehow to grow the county, and, and certainly I think that's a goal of all of us. We'd like to see more, more commerce, more business, more more business, more everything here, uh, population pick back up. And with the influx from a lot of places that are overtaxing and overbearing with some of their policies, we're seeing that happen naturally anyway. Uh, there's some organizations out there that work with counties and, and, and public entities that I think are doing a great job. And so, we had some meetings with a, a couple of guys, uh, that we talked to. I think it could be some very good possibilities for the county to help spur some growth, and I think later on, we'll probably talk about more of that. Uh, Randy sent some stuff on to the one gentleman that we talked to, but it could be a, a very huge stage for Reno County to be on and be showcased if it went through. And it would, I'll just tell you, it could be a 60 million household view possibility for us to, uh, to be a focus of where you can come move in the United States. And I think that's a big deal for maybe a pretty minimal risk. And so, we'll just see how that weighs out. Um, the chamber's aware of it, uh, and then another, another organization that works directly with that. So, it, it could be a pretty neat deal to have that happen. One of the, so to say, one of the things the mayors wanted to focus on was how to grow the county. One of the smaller communities that's to the west of us are growing some population that's coming out of another state. And, and that family, as she shared with me, continues to come to that town, and they're looking possibly at building. They bought some housing. And, and so folks are looking to come to what we offer, and we gotta capitalize on some of that and get them here. And so, I think there's a lot of hard work ahead. Uh, you know, one of the focuses obviously is housing and some other issues with the childcare issues going on. And so, I'm, I'm glad these things are moving forward, and perhaps we'll be just right there at the right time, uh, to get some of these things. But I, I left, I think, uh, the other day, I told Randy this this morning in his office. I think I've been more encouraged, uh, this past week over some of these things than I have been in the first year and a half since I've been here. And I, I, I look for good things to happen. I really do. And I, I know we're in a trying time, but that doesn't mean that you can't be creative and find ways to get things done. And, and so I hope some of these pan out, and some of the things that, you know, even the chamber and some of these organizations are working on, go forward and have a great help for Reno County and the citizens here. And, and myself personally, as a testimony, I've, I've told that people even at the meeting the other night, that that's my focus is to serve you, and you got a voice, and that's why we came here to hear it. Um, if, if, you know, the majority wants us to do one thing or another, they're gonna let us know. Sometimes you don't understand on the outside some of the decisions that are made because they have to be made for certain reasons. And I didn't when I first came to office. I'm just giving a little testimony this morning, but, but I, I am encouraged, and I think great things are down the pike for us, and, and, and maybe we can just, uh, we see that come to fruition. So, that's really all I got. Um, I will just say that we were challenged at a civic group to come back this Friday with a couple of names, or we were going to be fined for programs to come there and speak. And I stole one right out from underneath Mr. Partington's nose a while ago, and so I was really proud of myself for doing that. So, and he, if he don't get his two, he gets fined a couple of bucks, so. Anyway, I'll leave it at that. I'll see if I can get my other one. But that's all I got. So, thank you for being here. I appreciate your attendance and I appreciate all the input. And thank you, all of you, for all the hard work you do out there. Uh, it's, it doesn't go unnoticed at all. So, with that, if there are any of the final words, I, I think we'll adjourn, adjourn this meeting. Thank you.